Okay. You want me to ask for a mute? Okay. Mary, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you very much for joining us. Could you please mute until you're called upon?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe it needs to not be so close. It's from the phone to the microphone to the, yeah. Hey Jen, would you mind to do a sound test for us?
Sure, this is me speaking in my normal voice.
Okay, keep speaking in your normal voice, please.
A quick brown fox jumped over the red dog.
Perfect.
Red fox, yeah, okay.
Good enough, thank you Jen. All right, it is six o'clock, so we will go ahead and get started here. The Monday, July 27th, 2020 meeting of the Market City Commission is now called to order at 6:00 PM. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh no, we lost him. All right, I'm going to ask if maybe Sean can help us with that while we continue on here. I was trying to avoid the echo. We have Mayor Protem Hill joining us via phone tonight. And while we are doing that, City Clerk, if you could please start the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Bonzel?
Welcome to the.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier? Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
And then we're calling in for Mayor Protem Hill.
You are in the meeting now. There are three participants in the meeting. You have been put on hold by the host. You cannot listen or talk until the host releases the hold.
Thanks for your patience, everyone, sorry about that. Mayor Protem Hill, are you there? Am I still on hold, mute?
I think you should be in the meeting.
Okay. Mayor Protem, are you there?
Oh, he's not in the meeting anymore.
Mayor Protem Hill will be joining us shortly. I think we will proceed for now. Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us. Do we have a motion?
I'm back.
Okay, we've got you on roll call. Right, are we okay? Mayor Protem Hill? Stay here, Jen. Mayor Protem, say "present," please.
Yes.
Yes.
Present.
Thank you. All right, a motion on the agenda, anyone? Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Thank you, do we have a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
Second motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Brings us to announcements, I have a few construction updates. The Lake Shore Boulevard relocation is in three phases. We're hoping the first phase from Pine to Wright will be open to traffic by the end of the month, which is in a few days. Phase two, just kind of in between, they are working on the road parking lot and multi-use path. And then Phase three, north of Holly, was just completed to allow for fiber line and gas line relocation. Also, we've currently got the Marquette Drive, Lakeview Drive, and Union Street, kind of across from Sherers Hills. That package project is in progress. SIMP sanitary sewer laterals replacement and Matson Lower Harbor parking lot resurfacing has already started. And then we've also got replacement of curbing in poor condition as part of the SIMP project. And I know I've seen that in many places around the city. More information is available on the city website. Brings us to item number one on our agenda, appointments. We have two appointments for this evening. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to appoint Taylor Clip to the Marquette County Transit Authority for a term ending December 31st, 2021, and Michael Bradford to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for a term ending June 1st, 2023.
Thank you. Second, Commissioner Schlegel?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion, Commissioner Bonzel?
I'm just really excited to see both of these individuals stepping forward and volunteering to serve the community. I think it's really inspiring to see everyday residents volunteering their time. And I know both these guys personally, I think they'll do a great job.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlegel?
None.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Brings us to public comment. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address when making public comments. Please note commissioners cannot immediately respond to public comments. Our chance to do so is at the end of the meeting during commissioner comments. Do we have anyone for public comment this evening?
We only have one written comment, only one.
Okay, we have one written comment, and no one is on the phone line at this point. City Clerk, could you please read the written comment?
Thank you, ma'am. Margaret Brom, 404 East Magnetic. Item number five, I approve the new signs. Suggest you add at the bottom $75 fine for each violation. Suggests another sign indicating no camping on the island, no pitching of tents on the island, no hammocks on the island, no fires on the island. Item number six, Market Public Art Project. I'm the first to admit that art is not my area of expertise, however. I'm not sure this is a good idea because all I can think of when I see the words is Founder Landing. Remember, when could we see the lake from Front Street? Between Picnic Rocks and McCarty's Cove, respect the current between the shore and picnic rocks. Lower Harbor dream of a day when there's no more tires or junk cars in the lower harbor. Market Commons gratitude, there are still farmers. Clark Lambros Park area hope, you don't need a lifeguard because they aren't here anymore. Maybe tree pictures would fit the geography better. Birch trees are beautiful and Lombardi poplars at Clark's Lambros Park would be nice, just a thought. An addendum to this comment is Marquette needs to put up signs saying no dogs.
Thank you, City Clerk. Next up, we have a presentation by Andrea Engmeyer with the Peter White Public Library. Andrea, thank you for joining us this evening. And whenever you have your presentation ready, please go ahead. Take a moment here with technology to get all situated.
Yep, no problem. Thank you all for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. I come in once a year and kind of make a report on what's happened at the library in the past year. And this year is just a little different. As we all know, that's kind of the understatement of the year, right? So I thought I would talk about what we've been doing since March instead of what we've done in the fiscal year 1920, because I think it's more timely and appropriate. So with that being said, the mission of the Peter White Public Library is to enrich the community through access to library services and cultural opportunities. That's our mission statement. And we'll come back to that a few times through this presentation. But I always like to put that out there first because it's our guiding principle. Just a little review of the library structure. We are a sister to the city of Marquette. And you all appoint our library board. Library Board hires the library director. Library Director works with the Township Advisory Council, library board, to hire staff and create library services and cultural opportunities. So then there's COVID. Just a few notes about what happened with the library during COVID. We did keep our staff on payroll throughout the entire closure. Despite several technical issues, like our website being down for the first week and a half of closure, we were able to roll out a robust online and remote service portfolio in under a month. Staff working from home were able to answer library phone calls, respond to voicemails and emails. And the library management team met weekly since March, has been meeting weekly since March, to continue to create new ways to serve our community. I've got a lot of pictures in this presentation, so I'm just going to run through them. But essentially, these are images from our social media and website publicity, so some of them are probably duplication if you follow us online. We did close to the public on March 13th. By March 23rd, staff was not allowed to be on-site except for essential staff performing essential duties. By April 6th, we had online programming off-the-ground. This is a schedule that our Youth Services Department put out. And I really need to comment on my staff and how amazing they've been through this whole process. This completely put us on our end like it did with every other organization. And we had to really just roll with the punches and change. And no department showed this better than our Youth Services. They responded to this challenge with 100% enthusiasm. And all my staff really stepped up to the plate. But Youth Services went from a completely in-person model to online within a week. They just made the switch. So I always like to point out that amazing transformation. They did online storytimes, cooking classes, craft classes, anything you could stream, they were trying to stream. And they created a summer reading program. And what's interesting is there was a discussion on a library list recently. Libraries were really lamenting summer reading and how discouraging this summer has been for libraries around the state. And I had to chime in and say, I got to say, I think our summer reading program went really good, all things considered. And this right here is the reason, these programming kits. Our Youth Services Department distributed 3,800 kits during summer reading. And they're kits from craft kits, storytime kits, Teen Tuesdays, which are craft kits for teenagers. And our staff just, they worked so hard to get all these craft kits together. I think the last craft kit that we offered went up on social media and about 13 hours after it was posted, they were all reserved. We had no more. So it really was a big hit. And I think we will continue this type of programming as long as we need to be in this social distancing structure because it really appealed to our community. So these are some little folks coming to the library to pick up their kits. And these are some pictures that parents shared with us of their children working on the kits. It's really amazing to see these in people's homes and see folks using them and enjoying them. I know that's a big reward for our staff who spent so much time putting those kits together. Another successful thing that our Youth Services Department has done this year is to try and do onsite programming that's not encouraging people to meet in groups. So this is our wishing wall, and folks can come over and put a ribbon with their wish on it right outside the library. It's been kind of a fun thing for kids to come over and read other people's wishes and make a wish of their own. We had a lot of things already online before COVID hit. And so our Adult Services Department really just started to pump up those things that we were already doing. One of the first things we did was take all of our routers and put them in the windows so we could stream our internet service out into the parking lot. And the parking lot has really been, you know, it's not ideal, but it gives people access to internet at a time when a lot of us were trying to figure out how our kids were going to do school from home and what that meant for us. And we heard from a lot of people that this was really a lifesaver when it came to trying to figure out how to get through in the interim. We also added a lot of funding to our online platforms, namely Canopy, which is our streaming video service, and Libby, which is the ebook and e-audiobook platform. So we weren't buying as many books, so we decided to put a little bit more money into the platforms that people were able to use at the time. We also took the time to start working directly on digitization. One of our full-time reference librarians really adopted this program and took a lot of materials home and just started scanning. So we have a whole bunch of digital files that we now need to figure out what we're going to do with. And so that's the next step. But at least we have a lot of the scanning done. We've also been participating with Arts and Culture, as well as Northern and the Beaumere and Regional History Center on some memory projects. So working on ways to preserve the stories and the experiences of this pandemic and save it for archival history. And kind of a glimpse into what we've been going through and to be able to look at it in the future. Our adult programming has been off-the-ground since the middle of May. Adults are a little bit harder. I think a lot of us have been kind of zoomed out. So looking for ways that we can engage the community without relying exactly on Zoom programming is what we've been looking for for adult programming. This was a straw bale gardening class that we worked with a local gardener on. We've been able to do a little bit of music programming onsite at the bottom of the front street stairs. And then we have done some Zoom programs with music also. We started a community conversation program, and this program is actually being featured in a national library publication, I think it's in September, as a way that the library has worked to keep those community bonds at a time when we're all in the middle of such uncertainty. And this is just some of our programs that we've offered. So I'd like to talk a little bit about our reopening plan. It seems like, you know, as we're moving back to engaging in person with the public, it's important to make a lot of transparency about what you're doing. So we put out a reopening plan. Stages one and two, we're really focused on getting staffing back into the building. So we had management staff come in the building at the end of May with the rest of our staff following at the beginning of June. By June 8th, our book returns were opened and we were taking materials. We were taking the returns and our book returns at the library itself. I had 72 hours in here because up until I sent this presentation over to the city commission, we were doing 72 hours. And then new research came out showing that 96 hours is actually more appropriate for some library materials. So we've kicked it out another day. And materials come in, this is the Huron Mountain Gallery, and we just have tables that materials get piled on. And they sit on that table until it's time for them to be past their quarantine period and checked in. And we are not charging any fines on materials at this time. Curbside pickup started June 15th. We started the first week with 24 hours of curbside pickup appointments. And the following week, we kicked that up to 50 hours a week, which is what we're running now. We're doing an average of 40 pickups a day. My staff tells me that's a low number because that's just the number of appointments that we actually see in our appointment system. We're actually doing more than that because a lot of times people will call and say, hey, I'm in the parking lot, is there any way you can bring me my stuff? So this is probably a little low, but I do have a little short video clip of Chris taking some materials out to somebody's car. We're also trying to do as many other services via curbside as we can. We created family packs, so that's a way that families can request materials without actually having to put holds on specific titles. So they just tell us how many kids they have, what the age range are, if there are any special interests, and we select materials for the family. We're doing printouts and copies, tax forms, scanning, faxing, notary service, all via curbside. So people just give us a call and we figure it out. We started Stage Four just a week and a half ago or so. July 15th, we started with computer appointments. And then the 20th, we started circulation passport and proctoring appointments. So we're getting people into the building via appointment at this point. And we're hoping to be able to expand that as we can. We've continued to be involved in what's going on in the community. The census has been onsite several times to try and encourage people to complete their census. And for anyone who's listening, if you haven't completed your census, do, please, please do that. It's really important statistics for our community. We've also stayed involved in a lot of the regional and national conversations that are taking place and ensuring that we have the materials that folks need at a time when they need them. I love this picture because, you know, we have so many people who come and meet in our parking lot. And the library is still a destination even when they can't come inside to meet. So what's next? We want to get more people in the building. We know people want to browse the collection. We know that they want more in-person services. And we would like to be able to return to a drop-in access model as opposed to appointments. And we're really hoping to get some of that off the ground before school gets back in session. What are our obstacles? Staffing concerns, we've had a really shocking amount of turnover. We have about, well, by the end of September, we will have had about 25% turnover. Those are gaps in staffing that we are not accustomed to. And we have a lot of concerns from parents about what the school year means for themselves, for their jobs, for their ability to work. And so that's just something that is out there, and I know it's out there for every employer. Safety, huge concerns. The library services are all multi-touch, multi-use models. So everything that you use at the library has been used by somebody else before, which means we have a lot of cleaning concerns. And we have a lot of making sure there's a gap in access between use. So all those things are just considerations as we move forward. And then prioritizing services. What's a ways off? Unlimited access to the building, it's going to be a while. Meeting room use for community groups, also, it's going to be a while. And the third-place usage of the library. Those things are just really difficult for the library to manage at this time. And for those of you who aren't familiar with the term "third place", that is a term referring to you have your home, you have your work, and you have this third place where you spend a lot of time. And the library is that third place for a lot of our community. And unfortunately, that's really difficult to deal with in this current climate. So this is a ways off, but it's our goal. We want to get back to this. It would not be a library program if I didn't talk about finances for just one slide. So for fiscal year 2019, 2020, we're projecting to actually have a fund balance because we've been running short-staffed. For funding year 2021, we're in the same situation as a lot of folks. We don't know. We're projecting maybe $100,000 to $120,000 shortfall. So much of it depends on what happens with the state budget and how that trickles down to everything else. We're currently rethinking all of our operations and prioritizing the filling of open positions. Right now, we have two open positions. By the end of September, we'll have seven. So we're trying to really look strategically at what that means for our services and how we prioritize filling those positions. And on top of everything else, 2020 is a big ballot year for us. We are on both elections. We've got, on the primary, we are on the ballot in Sands and Scandia Township. And at the general election, we are on the ballot in Chocolay, Marquette, and West Branch Townships. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I'd just like to first commend the library for the job that you've done before COVID, but the way that you've really pivoted and stepped up.
Thank you.
Especially in the Youth Services Department, which I've witnessed firsthand with my daughter and participated in all of the programs to keep us busy during the stressful quarantine. So nice job, thank you to you and your staff. Kudos. Other commissioners? Commissioner Davis?
Thank you so much. I feel like a lot of the services with the COVID, the innovation, I think, is what is going to be one of the positive things from all of this, very few positive things. But thank you so much for your innovation and for the youth programming to get things back up and running within a week. It's phenomenal. Things like the craft kits and for the library to provide the internet service, that was so important. I am curious about why the 25% turnover that it sounds like you was unexpected and is a little bit unsettling for you.
Yeah, we have really wonderful retention. So for...
What is the reason, are you thinking, that we have the 25%?
I think there's a lot of uncertainty. And folks who are unsure about whether or not it's the right decision to continue to work for their personal lives, it's just very... A lot of people aren't comfortable working in a public environment anymore. And so I'm really concerned that when school gets back in session, we might see a little bit more of that because parents realize that it is really difficult to juggle what they're trying to do if we do have to go back to homeschool, homeschool format. I know a lot of people are just thinking about doing that just in general, be it through the school system or some other program. And it's really hard to do that when you're working. So a lot of it is personal decisions about safety and work. And we're doing what we can to provide a very safe work environment, but there's just a lot of uncertainty right now.
I also think you're going to be extremely important this fall as more families choose homeschooling and as some more online learning continues to occur. So thank you for that.
Yep, for sure.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you for your presentation. It was really informative. I think you're all doing a great job, especially considering all the challenges that you've faced. Excited to see the library gradually moving back to at least limited in-person service. And personally, like, I live just a couple blocks away from the library. So, you know, I've seen some of the cool socially-distanced concerts that are taking place in the library steps, and really appreciate that. I think it makes the neighborhood a really nice place to be. The library is certainly a great neighborhood partner. I, my only question was just, is there a place where, you know, we as commissioners can go, as well as residents and, you know, people in the area can go to learn a little bit more about these villages that are going to be on the ballot in August and November? Just because personally, I'd be, I'm, of course, fully in favor of it. I'd be happy to use my platform to try and push out some of that information and point people in that direction.
Absolutely, yeah. We have, all the ballot information is on our website. So that's probably the easiest place to get the information. And we also have a library supporter web Facebook page that a lot of volunteers who support the library, they actually manage that piece, that page. So that would be another thing that could help.
Awesome, thanks, I'll check that out, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
You know, we've known for a very long time that the Peter White Public Library is one of the great jewels of the city. But I never realized how well it sparkles. And it's sparkling now because of the people that work there, the librarians, the staff that make it come alive and deliver that critical service for everybody. I was thinking as you were talking that really you define initiative and imagination and innovation because that's really what you're using to make that library work during this most difficult time. And what you're providing is an unbelievable service to all of our patrons, really our entire community. And again, I could only commend you, I cannot be more laudatory with how the library is coming through this extraordinarily difficult time, what you're giving back to the city and its residents, the community and our townships that we support. And thank you very much for that. If you have an opportunity, please pass on to your staff, you know, my thanks for what they're doing. Thank you, Your Honor.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't know if I can put it any better than what Commissioner Stonehouse just did. Thank you for that, Fred. Couple of things that I've noticed. Number one, I'm really excited to see how your crew, whoever's putting the signs out for the ballot-specific areas, I'm really excited to see the exposure that I've seen throughout the county in my daily travels. So I think that, you know, it just goes to show the commitment that you guys have isn't, you know, it's 24/7, doesn't matter, you know, what's going on. You're always out there doing what's right for the library itself. And I really applaud you with the ability to adjust so quickly. And I think that's something that we've seen in our last presentation from Arts and Culture, from this group, from every group, is nobody sat back and said, well, let's just wait and see. Everybody just said, we got to get, you know, we got to keep going. We got to make sure that our services are as available as they can be for our community. And that is just, again, you know, more kudos for you guys. But, and it just goes throughout our entire community. And I hope other communities are experiencing that same rejuvenation. And really, I think you put it well when you said it's a humanist opportunity for you to reevaluate your, whether it be staffing, every aspect of how you run things. It's time to sit back, you know, and look at it and go, you know, are we doing it as efficiently as we can? Make some changes if you need to, you know. Best practices, it's obvious that you've already got a couple of things that are going to be published and whatnot. I think that's just fabulous. And that's something that every community and every aspect of communities really has this amazing opportunity now to sit there and say, okay, you know, what are we doing? And what are we doing well, what can we fix? If something like this would continue on for a long period of time, but really, really great job. So I'll stop patting you back because everybody else is doing it too, but just keep doing it and stay the course.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thanks a lot for doing great work at the, at the library, you know, keeping it going as best you can, I'm sure. Peter Wright, back in the day, was pretty good with innovation and making things work. Very hard worker. And that's why I see you and I think himself with the library upstairs and the people from Marquette looking down, smiling and saying what good work you have.
And he's wearing a mask right now, too. His bust.
Is he?
Yes, he is.
That's great. Well, thank you, Andrea. Please pass along your thanks.
I will do. Thank you very much.
Keep up the good work. Thanks for joining us this evening. All right. Brings us to item number three in our agenda, the consent agenda. This will require a roll call vote. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Bonzo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Any discussion?
No, there's none.
Seeing none, City Clerk, could please have a roll call vote?
Thank you. Commissioner Bonzo?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yep.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Moving on to item number four, PUD agreement with Hospitality House of Upper Peninsula and addendum to PUD agreement for U.P. Health System Hospital Project. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, the U.P. Health System Marquette Hospital Campus was created on land that was zoned as Plan Unit Development PUD based on a PUD site plan dated July 20, 2015. Following all required planning commission and city commission approvals, DLP Marquette General Hospital LLC and the city entered into a PUD agreement dated and recorded October 14, 2015. A minor amendment to the PUD site plans was approved by the zoning administrator on October 9, 2018 for the construction of Beacon House in that area that was intended as a site for expansion and the potential development of a medical office building. On April 30, 2020, the second corrective covenant deed was recorded regarding the purchase of the parcel by Hospitality House of the Upper Peninsula for the purpose of construction, constructing the Beacon House, a use consistent with the PUD agreement. On July 7, 2020, the planning commission conditionally approved a final site plan for the development of the new Beacon House upon the conditions that an amended final site plan was submitted to demonstrate compliance without ordinance requirements and that a revised PUD agreement is submitted to reflect the proposed amendments to the most recently approved PUD amendment. The final site plan updates have been submitted and accepted by the zoning administrator and the city engineer. A PUD agreement for Hospitality House of Upper Peninsula and an addendum to the PUD agreement for the U.P. Health System Project, Hospital Project have been prepared by the city attorney and submitted for city commission review and approval. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, approve both the PUD agreement with Hospitality House of Upper Peninsula and the addendum to the PUD agreement for the U.P. Health System Hospital Project and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the documents. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to approve both the PUD agreement with Hospitality House of the Upper Peninsula and the addendum to the PUD agreement for the U.P. Health System Hospital Project and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the documents.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Frazier? Commissioner Stonehouse, any discussion?
Well, Your Honor, certainly this project has been a long one, has been ongoing for some time. It has followed a great tradition of having the Beacon House closer to the hospital when it was located on College Avenue. So I think that it's very important we continue to keep that tradition alive and to do it in the manner that this document provides.
Commissioner Frazier, anything to add?
I agree. Commissioner Stonehouse, a very good project. I'm thankful for the hospital to keep it near the hospital. I know it's been very good. The old hospital, there's very good people out there. If I remember in the hospital, they had a place to stay and visit once a while. So it's very good community.
Any additional discussion by other commissioners on this item? Commissioner Davis, go ahead.
I can't let this go by by saying how pleased I am to see the Beacon House moving forward. I think those of us in Marquette don't really get to use the services of the Beacon House. And oftentimes, we don't understand how vital it is to our community in support of the patients and their families that come to Marquette. And oftentimes, this could be the reason that people choose to get their health care here in Marquette because of the Beacon House. And this is a group that has done a phenomenal job over the years, from one little tiny house on Magnetic Street to what it is becoming. So I'm really pleased to see it moving forward.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Commissioner Bonzo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just want to completely agree with everything that Commissioner Stonehouse and Commissioner Davis said. And I just want to add that I think as Commissioner Schlegel noted at a previous meeting, you know, this is really an example of U.P.'s looking out for U.P.'s, that statistically, we know that most of the people that the Beacon House serves are, are families from the U.P. And I think that there's something really inspiring about that. So I'm also really, really excited about this project moving forward.
Great. Mayor Protem Hill, did you have anything you'd like to add discussion-wise on this item?
Uh, no, thank you. I appreciate that we got the full site plan. And so we did have a chance to see what's coming. And I appreciate the work that everyone did to get the, the reason we're voting tonight is to have a chance to see with the project and to, to make sure that all of the legal work that needed to done, to be done for the land transfer to happen was able to take place. So good work every, I'm glad this is finally going to be here and thanks, everybody.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes 7-0. Moving on to new business, item number five, Park and Beach No Smoking Ordinance. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, ma'am. Background, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board took up the issue of smoking at public beaches and Marquette parks at its July 20, 2020 meeting. The board unanimously agreed to recommend to the city commission, recommend the city commission consider creating a new ordinance or amending existing ordinances to prohibit smoking in, in all Marquette city parks and on all public bathing beaches within the city. Reasons discussed surround the littering component, especially along Lake Superior Shoreline, as well as the health and safety component of secondhand smoke. Many Michigan communities ban public, smoking in public parks and bathing beaches, in part due to the fact that there are often children playing there who may unwillingly come in contact with secondhand smoke. Several years ago, the Prescott Park Advisory Board brought this issue forward to the city commission. An action was taken to administratively make a park rule that smoking was banned on the island. No ordinance was ever created or changed, changed at that time. Py-Poc has always sought an ordinance that would be more enforceable. Their primary concern has been fire danger and at the park, followed by a litter concern. The topic has come out of many conversations surrounding the littering and disrespectful actions of the beach users during the July 4, 2020 holiday. Staff tasked with preventing a similar issue in the future would like to purchase and install at beach parking areas several of the attached signs that cover all the enforceable prohibitions. These would replace the "No Dogs on Beach" signs currently posted. Fiscal effect, there are funds in the MFD beach budget for the signs along beach parking areas. Any signs in the park system would have to be budgeted for in the fiscal year '21 budget. Recommendation, direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance to prohibit smoking on the City of Marquette's public bathing beaches and all city parks for the consideration of the city commission. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
So commissioners, just to reiterate, if we decide to go forward with this recommendation, this would allow the city attorney to draft an ordinance. It would have to come back before us. We would have to have a public hearing. So our vote tonight does not, is not the last say in this matter. So, that being said, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to direct the city attorney to create a draft ordinance to prohibit smoking on the City of Marquette's public bathing, basically, public beaches and city parks under the consideration of the city commission.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
Second motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier, any discussion?
I think it's a great idea. I mean, Prescott is one thing because of so many woods. It'd be harder for the fire department to get around and fight fires. That's a great place to ban it. And city parks are agreed with that, you know, so many festivals, da-da-da. Also with the fact that Prescott, Lower Harbor's got a new playground for the kids. And I look, if this gets passed, I look forward to that. Would help the people, the families go down there and let their kids enjoy it without worrying about people smoking here and there. So I'll agree with it.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlegel, anything to add?
Yes, thank you. This has been, it's been a hot button for a long time. And I really feel that we need to, you know, start this conversation and put it, put it forefront because, you know, one of the exciting things is that you're seeing a lot less people smoking. At least, that's my personal opinion. I've been a non-smoker for seven years. And to be a little bit of a hypocrite here, I think it's one of the most offensive things that I've ever done. And, and I'm embarrassed when I think back to the, to the impact that I had on the people around me when I was, when I was smoking in public and not taking other people's personal space into consideration. That being said, at the same time, the immense amount of litter, living where I live, I get a lot of cigarette butts coming from the roads that are, you know, going by my place. And it's just kind of reiterated the need for such a policy to be put in place. I want to bring to the public's attention gentleman Caesar Escobar. Caesar's one of our local, I'm going to call him, you know, a little bit of a, kind of a saint in my book because he walks the beach daily. And there's a lot of people that do this, don't get me wrong. But Caesar's one that I've had extensive conversation with. And he walks the beach daily and he picks up everything that he comes across. And I just can't thank him enough for it. And I know that there's a lot of other people out there that are doing it. And you can find Caesar on his Twitter page, and I can't find that right now. He does not have a Facebook page, but he has a Twitter page. And if you can find him, he would be more than happy to set up a group that would routinely police our, our beaches for trash. We saw great things come from last weekend's cleanup of the harbor. It's just our, our community coming together and doing great things that are, that are allowing us to, you know, put some, put some onus on, on the people and say, "We, as a community, are going to do this. It's not just one person's issue," to make sure that things are being cleaned up. So that's something that I really have excited to see some people willing to champion this, this effort. So find Caesar. It's C.E.S.A.R.E.S.C.O.B.A.R. is his name. And, and join that, that, I'm going to say a, it's a task force or something, but, you know, that, that crew. And help, help keep things clean. And again, this comes back to something that has been reiterated so many times in the past couple of years here now that I've been on the commission that really excites me is it's, we're policing ourselves. We're, we're asking our community to take the responsible steps and, and continue to, to move forward with, you know, best practice. And I just, I just really, and I'm sure it happened before, but I'm just, little things like this. It's not always the big, the big-ticket items, you know, that, that we need to be concerned about. It's, it's the smaller issues as well as the big issues that need to be, you know, taken and run with as, as a community. So, sorry for the ramble, but it is, it's, I'm excited to see this come before us and get some traction.
Mayor Protem Hill, did you have any discussion this evening? I don't want to forget about you on the phone here.
Yeah, thank you. And I didn't want to cut anybody off. I, I, I agree with what's been said so far. And I think starting the conversation by approving this first step tonight and inviting the public in for the public hearing is a great next step.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Commissioner Bonzo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one question. So if we were to pass this non-smoking ordinance for our parks and beaches, would, I'm just curious, would that create additional liability for individuals or organizations who are hosting events in city parks? Like, I'm thinking like Blues Fest, Beer Fest, or would the onus still just be on the individuals who would be smoking to not do that?
I don't know the answer. I'm looking around. I don't know if maybe Acting Senate Manager Gary Simpson could help, or maybe City Attorney Ron, who do we want to go with?
Yeah, I was going to try to punt to Ron.
Okay. Ron, you may, or may not have heard the question. Are you still on the phone?
I am, Your Honor. I didn't hear the question.
Okay, I'll ask Evan to please repeat it and maybe just a little bit closer into the microphone. Or, would you be able to hear it if he did that, or do you want me to repeat it, Ron?
I hear you very clearly.
Okay, I'll just repeat the question. So essentially, Commissioner Bonzo was asking for an event such as Beer Fest or other events that take place on city property, would the liability, if someone was smoking at that event, would the liability fall to the event organization, or would it fall on the individual?
Well, the way the ordinance is, is, would be drafted, the ones I've at least seen, I think the, the liability, the responsibility would be on the individual who's, who's smoking and not the event organizer. I'm sure that they would not, I mean, they can't control to a certain extent what is done once people are in their, in the park. But, you know, I think it would be a stretch to try to pin the liability on them when the ordinance would be specific to an individual not smoking in public parks or beaches.
Thank you very much. Does that answer the question, Commissioner Bonzo?
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you. I appreciate it. As far as just additional comment, I just wanted to say that I think that there was a similar proposal that was considered for, specifically for Prescott Park a few years ago. And so this has been a part of our conversation here in our community off and on for several years. And I'm really excited that we're finally moving forward with it. I think it'll be a good thing for our parks, for our environment, for public health. And so I'm excited to see the ordinance that our city attorney can craft for us.
Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, smoking debris on our beaches is a big issue, and I'm really in favor of getting rid of all this toxic trash. Filters take up to 10 years to decompose, and they contain plastic that remains in our environment. I happen to be one of those volunteers that picks up cigarette butts. I've been doing it for years. And thank you to all of those other volunteers out there who do so. I have some cautions about approving this motion. First, I never think it's a good idea to create a policy that's not backed up by education and nondiscriminatory and consistent enforcement. Second, cigarette butts are litter, and we have an ordinance on litter already, which then suggests it's an issue of enforcement. And perhaps we, you know, one of our options is to enforce the existing litter ordinance that, to see if it will resolve the issue and, along with education. The language that is proposed is a little concerning to me because it says "public bathing beaches." So I, we have 10 miles of shoreline in the city. So is that Clark Lambros Park, McCarty's Cove, South Beach, and are there other? So I guess my question, that maybe will come out in the ordinance draft, and that will be fine. It also says "all parks." And so when I checked the Parks and Rec five-year plan, there was something like 39 parks. And does that include the Bike Path as a park? Does it include Father Marquette as a park? Does it, you know, there's the little linear parks that are in between the buildings? So I guess I question what "all the parks" means. Maybe we were wanting to take a look at not all parks at this point, but maybe playgrounds and Prescott Park. Fourth, I have concerns about unintended consequences when we do something like this. Will the ordinance force the issue to move to another area? So if I'm on McCarty's Cove and I want to have a cigarette, I can just simply take that short trip out to the road and have my cigarette. And now if a trash receptacle isn't right there, I'll just throw it on the ground. And we all know what happens to those. So are we just moving the issue to another place? Finally, I don't believe an ordinance alone will solve this problem, although I'd love to solve the problem. We need to build a culture of non-tolerance of smoking litter and of secondhand smoke. I will support this motion only because of its potential to become part of a more comprehensive solution. Education, trash receptacles, enforcement, the number and messaging of signage, all need to come together so we don't just have another ordinance on the books that becomes silent in future years. So I look forward to reading the draft and learning about it. learning about a comprehensive plan and hearing from the community during the public comment period.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Oh, go ahead, Carrie.
Hi, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to bring out, John Swinson is on the phone and probably can address some of Commissioner Davis's issues. And also, I didn't think it was gonna be available, but John did get it through at the last minute. And I want to thank John because he is on vacation today, but he did do some work. And, uh, we do have a map prepared, which Sean can put up on the screen. And I will also ask Sean to email the map to the commissioners after the meeting. And again, it might address some of Commissioner Davis's concerns.
Okay, thank you. John, are you on the phone?
Yes.
Thank you for joining us. Appreciate it.
Can you guys hear me all right?
Yep. And were you able to hear Commissioner Davis's questions?
Yes, for the most part.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, um, the, the question regarding, um, the beaches and which beaches would be included. That one's fairly simple. And I think Sean, is Sean showing the map there?
Yes.
Yeah, I have the map on the screen, John.
Okay. So that map outlines, um, the designated public bathing beaches. And those include South Marquette, um, McCarty's Cove, uh, Clark Park, Middle Island Point at the island, as well as, it's kind of hard to see on the map, but, uh, the Tourist Park, uh, bathing beach as well. Um, so those are the designated bathing beaches. Now, regardless of whether or not those are guarded, um, there are times when one, uh, or more would not be guarded due to staffing or other issues, um, those would be still considered public bathing beaches. Um, so that's, those are the beaches that it would cover. Um, the comments regarding, uh, the parks are, are good comments. And there is some, uh, some work to be done there in regards to, um, you know, what would be included. Brad had in mind, um, the physical parks, um, and that was what they were discussing. They were not discussing the linear, uh, bike paths. Um, but, uh, you know, that, that would be a topic of consideration. And their primary concern with parks, aside from littering and aside from the fire danger at Presque Isle, um, was second-hand smoke for kids still. Excellent comments. Um, and there's certainly room to, uh, work some of that into, uh, what the attorney comes up with.
John, any additional discussion, commissioners, or questions for John? Go ahead, Commissioner Fraser.
My only comment is, I think it's a great idea if the city can monitor somehow. But the only I look at is, I've talked before about people that love to smoke in no smoking areas. I know back in the old hospital was, you know, off Berry there, or off Third Street, I'd see a parking ramp, it'd say, no smoking anywhere on campus. People spoke right by the sign. I've seen it everywhere. Out of libraries, got this problem too. People have commented about people smoking right at the entrance to the library, you know, because there's no sign. So I just look at that as a problem eventually, how to enforce that because I know a lot of people, I'm not pricking any names, but a lot of people love to stand and smoke where there's no smoking signs. So that's the thing to look at. So this could be harder to enforce, but I look forward to it.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, seeing no further discussion, all in favor, please say yes.
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 Okay. All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to new business, item number six, Marquette Public Art Project. City Clerk, could you please read the background?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, the Marquette Public Art Commission has approved a concept for their first major project in Marquette. This community art concept will entail the following: five murals painted in five locations along the bike path using the following words. Founder's Landing, remember. Between Picnic Rocks and McCarty's Cove, respect. Lower Harbor, dream. Marquette Commons, gratitude. Clark Lambos Park Area, hope. The M-PAC made a motion to support the project at their July 15, 2020 regular meeting. The concept was brought before the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board at their July 20, 2020 meeting with resulting motion. Recommend the city commission to approve the concept of the proposed bike path murals. Both groups felt the message of each word fit well with the history and current events of the given locations. The Downtown Development Authority sent an email of support for the mural by the Marquette Commons. Staff would seek proposals for the art, which would then be juried by the Marquette Public Art Commission. Artists or groups of artists selected for each mural would not be paid for this project since it is a community art project. Supplies for the project, including personal protective equipment, will be purchased through the M-PAC budget. Stencils of the letters would be applied and all art would be within the designated area of the word. Timing for this project would be late August. Artists would be invited to touch up their work in the spring if necessary. This is a temporary art installation and would be removed in September 2021. Fiscal effect, the expenses surrounding this project of $3,300 are included in the fiscal year 2020, 2020 public art budget. Recommendation, approve the concept of the bike path murals and authorize the Marquette Public Art Commission to proceed with soliciting proposals. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we approve the concept of the bike path murals and authorize the Marquette Public Art Commission to proceed with soliciting proposals.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second, I second.
Mayor Proton Hill, thank you. Commissioner Bonzel, any discussion?
Uh, not much, other than that I think this is a really exciting project. Um, I think we've seen recently some of the benefits, um, and the liveliness that public art can bring to our community with the mural that was recently completed just a couple blocks away from here. And I'm really excited to see what it looks like. Um, and to see what , uh, our artistic and creative community can come up with.
Excellent. Mayor Proton Hill?
I, yeah, all in favor. Very exciting.
Anyone else? Commissioner Fraser?
I think it's a great idea. Something people look at if they're walking around, if they're biking, anything like Commissioner Stonehouse before, and, uh, add to the history of Marquette.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Just a, a practical question. Um, I note the way we, we will remove the art is with a power washer. Have we actually tried that?
I'm looking, we've got Tina here in the audience. Maybe she could approach the podium and, and let us know. Yeah, I don't see a microphone though. Is it, oh, there it is. Okay, go ahead. Yes, please. Thank you.
So, uh, we have been talking with the gentleman over at Marquette Wallpaper and Paint. They felt that the latex paint would be easily removed by power washing. But if, um, we did, we do want to do some further investigation of that. If there was ever any issue, that's why we also discussed the asphalt sealer. Um, so we would look, blend right in with the asphalt and we would just paint over. Um, I was very concerned that I didn't want it to look choppy. It wanted to look like it was the asphalt. And there's some really great products out there. So we wouldn't, if it didn't work, we would have a, a sealant that we would put on it.
Okay. So I mean, so we would know beforehand that yes, this will remove it without damaging the asphalt.
Yeah, yeah. We would know which one. We can, we could test it out.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming forward with that answer. Other commissioners, anything to add? All right, seeing no further discussion, all in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to new business, item number seven, moratorium on outdoor gatherings in excess of 250 people. City Clerk, could you please read the background?
Thank you, ma'am. Background, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-115 issued by Governor Whitmer, outdoor public gatherings have been restricted to not more than 250 people or 25% of the maximum capacity of the venue, whichever is smaller, or to 500 people or 25% of the maximum capacity of the venue for a concert space, racetrack, sports arena, stadium, or similar venue under certain specified circumstances. The Center for Disease Control classifies events proceeding these maximum capacities as either high risk, defined as medium-sized in-person gathering, gatherings that are adapted to allow individuals to remain spaced at at least six feet apart and with attendees coming from outside the local area, or high risk, defined as large in-person gatherings where it is difficult for individuals to remain spaced at least six feet apart and attendees travel from outside the local area, and has strongly recommended against holding events that draw nonessential visitors, spectators, or volunteers. The City of Marquette has determined that it is in the best interest to place a moratorium on the approval of zoning or any other permits related to outdoor gatherings in excess of 250 persons for a period of 90 days until or until further relaxation of criteria in the aforementioned or any ensuing executive orders, or until it is determined that the State of Michigan and City of Marquette in particular has entered Phase Six of the Governor's reopening plan. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, authorize the mayor to sign the resolution. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Oh, yeah, I guess we can do the motion. And then if we, if we want to bring Ron in, unless someone would rather make a motion to suspend the rolls. Either way, we want to do it. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I, um, I motion to authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Bonzel?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Uh, I think at this point, we'll go ahead and have Ron maybe explain for us, um, kind of in more layman's terms, what, what this can do for us. And then if we have any further discussion. Ron, are you on the phone still?
I am, Your Honor. And let me, I can hear you well. So let me start and explain how this first came to my attention. Uh, and Dennis may have been on the line as well. But I initially received contact from the zoning department, um, regarding their concern that if someone requested a temporary event permit and met all the requirements of the permit, we would have to issue it. Uh, we know that temporary event permits are restricted under the Governor's order, or, or events are restricted, rather, under the Governor's order. But we felt that, uh, that it would possibly happen, that we would have to issue the, uh, permit and then we would have to police the area to make sure there were fewer than, no more than 250 people. Uh, so that's kind of how it started. It was kind of like, uh, an extra layer of protection to the Governor's order. Uh, we, we thought too, that there were perhaps some definitional problems with the, uh, EO 115 that talks about as, as written in the order, concert space and racetrack and sports arena and so on and so forth. We thought there might be a venue that would, would be outside of those definitions that would be from that public. Um, so we also, I thought this would be an way to deny everyone on, on a nondiscriminatory basis. And no one could raise an issue, uh, that way. And finally, uh, I think the commission came in for a lot of unjust criticism about what happened at McCarty's Cove. And even though it's not the same situation, it generated a lot of publicity and adverse publicity, I might add. And we thought this might at least give us a little bit more control in the long run over a lot of things until the Governor's order changes or the moratorium ends. Uh, and it was just an attempt to really give the city an extra layer of protection, as simple as that.
Thank you very much for the explanation. We'll go back to the original motion maker, Commissioner Stonehouse. Any discussion on this topic?
I'm sorry, say again, Your Honor.
Just if you had any discussions. And I, I believe you made the motion, but I may have forgotten.
Oh, yes. No, um, I think it's important. I think it's a good message the city can send. I think it's a, a good way we can build for the future if we have to expand it or change it. So I, I certainly am very supportive of, of taking this action.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Bonzel, anything to add? I know you were the second.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just add that, uh, you know, I think that especially with the events that took place in the Fourth of July, um, at McCarty's Cove, especially with some of the requests for, uh, permits for large events that we've received recently, there's a clear need for the, for this, uh, this resolution, uh, for this moratorium. I think it makes sense, especially with COVID-19.
I'm sorry, I can't hear what Evan's saying.
Okay, I apologize. So I'll start over.
Much better.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, I was just going to say that, uh, in, in general, I think it's a, it's certainly needed, um, with, with regards to what happened on the Fourth and the permit, uh, requests that we, permit applications we've received for some events recently. Um, it's important that we're treating everybody fairly, uh, and that we're taking COVID-19 seriously, uh, that we're trying to do everything that we can as a city to reduce and minimize the transmission of the virus, um, especially with local cases, uh, increasing. So I strongly support the resolution.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you. Um, you know, I've read over this a couple times and I, and I, I get it. I understand what we're doing this for. I like the extra layer of protection. Um, I don't necessarily think that we can, I, I don't think that we can necessarily relate this to what happened on the Fourth of July. Um, and I, and I'm gonna go back to that only because I'm still really fired up about it. Um, and the fact that we didn't do a, a better job as a, as a community to keep that small pocket of troublemakers from disrupting our, our holiday weekend. Um, now, and I, I know that there's, there's a, uh, order, not an order, but there's been a request to, to say, how are we gonna deal with these types of groups in the future? Um, so that we have something in place that is, I guess, maybe even more so in writing than what we had before. But I, I can't imagine that we really didn't have something already that was sufficient, but just wasn't, wasn't being enforced. So enough, let me put it that way. It wasn't being enforced enough. Um, so I, I understand what we're doing here. But I also don't think that, you know, the last two years, the bad example that those, uh, those people that were part of those two gatherings have, uh, kind of scarred our, our, our holiday weekend. There's so many other people that did it right. And there were so many miles of beaches that were doing things in a, in a better way. And, and we can't, um, we can't let it happen again where these guys come in and kind of bully their way into ruining a, a holiday weekend. So, you know, whatever that is, and I'm sure that we're gonna have very good, uh, direction coming from the city manager, from the police department, from the fire department, all of these people. Um, but I, I, I don't want to think that this is directly related to that. And, uh, I want to make sure that it's, it's really for the event requests and that, uh, the people that are attempting to put on events that would, uh, that could potentially have people exposed to, um, you know, the coronavirus or however, um, through just quantity of, of people. So, um, I, I hope I'm being clear, you know, with that. But, and I certainly do support it. And I'm glad that, uh, I'm glad that we're adding this extra layer of protection. Thank you.
Other commissioners?
I, I have something, Jenna.
Oh, go ahead, Mayor Proton Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to confirm 90, this is going to be through 90 days from today. I, according to my computer, that's, uh, October 25th. Uh, so that would take us through the fall into presumably, uh, some level of snow weather. Um, and I do think, as was said at a previous meeting, uh, we are not in any way going beyond the Governor's Executive Order. What this does is make absolutely clear, I, to anyone in the community that we need to follow this executive order to be safe. Our numbers are going up. And we know that most transmission is happening, um, in, with people who actually all, you know, people who know each other, who are getting together. And unfortunately, we need to, uh, do have to have more social distance even, even outside. So I think that continuing to follow the guidance of the executive orders is gonna help get us, uh, to the point where the case numbers are going down instead of going up. But right now, case numbers are going up. And we have to, uh, continue to tighten the dial while the numbers are going up. So I am in favor of this. Thank you.
Mayor Proton, I would just ask maybe, Ron, could you clarify? I read this as, um, a series of or statements, not, not a 90-day absolute.
It's for a period of, yeah, it, it, it doesn't have to go 90 days. That's the max. Um, the Governor's order could relax, uh, the criteria and that would change. Um, the other thing I would tell the commission is typically with these moratoriums, 90 days out is about as far as they're allowed. I mean, it's, it's a legal question, but going out beyond 90 days is, is, is I mean, it's a legal question, but going out beyond 90 days is getting out there, number one. Number two, you can always rescind this order if it gets to a point before 90 days and you think that it's no longer necessary. Another, put this on the agenda, move to rescind it. So I think there's lots of ways around the 90-day timeframe, if that's what you want to do.
I guess I'm just wondering if things go more into lockdown mode, would we need to revisit this, or would we be still covered, Ron?
We're still covered by the Governor's order. Like I said, it was just an extra layer of protection, and we can, we're still covered by the Governor's order. Her order hasn't changed one bit with this. All we're saying is, we're not going to issue any temporary event permits from our department. It has nothing to do with the Governor's order. We're not going to do that during this period of time.
Thank you for that clarification. Any questions or discussion? All right. And this is, does require a roll call vote? City Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call vote? Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yep.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes 7-0. That brings us to our second public comment period of the evening. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address. Do we have any written public comment for the second comment this evening? Do we have anyone on the phone? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Brings us two comments from the commission. Commissioner Schlegel, go ahead and start us off.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A ton of stuff tonight, but some good, important topics that we're covering. Glad to see certain things being addressed. Just from concerns from the public that I'm hearing, pets on Presque Isle is still a big issue. We're having lots of dogs being seen out there, and I know that the parks are being patrolled, but if you do happen to see somebody out there, please let them know that, you know, they are in jeopardy of getting a ticket. I'd rather see them leave instead of having to pay the price, but if they have to, so be it. I walked along the Lake Shore reconstruction, that first phase that you mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, and I have to say that I knew I would be excited about this project, but looking at where it sits right now, I'm even more excited about it and how it's looking and the future of that stretch of land and how it's going to be utilized by our community. So I'm really excited to see where that sits. The social distancing and the mask wearing, obviously with the Governor's executive order, there are a lot more masks being worn, especially in the grocery stores, the public places. I'm very happy to see that, and I thank everybody for their diligence there. Please, you know, as busy as the beaches are, please do your best to social distance there. You know, respect other people's space. I know it's been hard this past weekend in that heat to even find a spot on the beach, but, you know, do your best to social distance. And just to, well, I guess I'll save, I've got more to say on the whole smoking topic as far as events and stuff, but I'll save that for when we go to the public. Bring that up in the future meetings here with the public. So, but, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to express my appreciation for the two Minnesota visitors, Marina Cobal and Dayton Nash, for saving the lives of three swimmers out at Little Presque Isle recently. And I know it's outside of the city, but it could have very easily been within the city. Marina bravely went into the water to save two children and their uncle while Dayton called for help. And this could so easily have resulted in a tragedy for our area. So instead, we can be grateful for Marina's excellent swimming skills and her lifesaving measures. So I really have an appreciation for that. Second, food trucks. It's an issue that's been brought up to me recently, and I recognize that things change as policies are written, and we can't always predict what will come up. Madam Mayor, I would suggest that we ask the staff to review the intent of the ordinance and if the language of the document meets the intent. You know, the proximity to brick-and-mortar eating establishments, the density, and really the definition of a food truck. If they don't move, are they considered, do they become a structure instead of a food truck? And I take no sides on this issue. I just wanted to be, make sure that we're fair to all entrepreneurs. And then, as I struggled with what was happening with the request for the smoking ordinance, I decided to take a look at signage around the community because they're recommending certain signage. So, you know, here's another request, Mayor Smith. I suggest we ask the city staff to take a close look at our signage for consistency, appropriateness, and messaging. I actually took pictures, and I think that you would be surprised at how some of our signs look. I believe our signage could be educational and positive, and by taking a good look at all of our signage, we might be able to eliminate some signs, and they could even be more effective. Some of this might be already happening, but let me give you a few examples of what I found. There is already a no-smoking sign at McCarty's Cove. There's a sign at Matson Park that says, "No golfing or ball playing." Is that really needed? That was a sign that I found, and there was no sign about dogs being there. There was a no-smoking sign at the ice cream place and "Please keep pets away" on the children's play area, but I wasn't so sure about that no golfing and ball playing. There's no sign to identify Founder's Landing, yet it's designated as a city park. And looking at social media, they sure have been surprised that alcohol is not allowed on our beaches, and I did not see any sign that says no alcohol. There, and just at Presque Isle, there's like three different types of signs for no dogs, and there are enough signs out there, but I think it's like overkill and people don't look at them. Well, my favorite sign out at Presque Isle was "No standing." Now, that's an interesting concept, and I'm sure there was a reason for that at some point. At Presque Isle, we're told to park only in designated areas, but take a drive around Presque Isle and try to find one that's marked "Park Here" or "Designated Parking." I received some complaints over the weekend about cars getting ticketed when just part of one of the tires was on the asphalt, and so they questioned about that whole parking area, too. And do we really want to send that message to our public and visitors? And then, just Presque Isle as a whole has an overwhelming number of signs that can't be read, and they're on both sides of the road, and it's, they just won't be read. They're confusing, and they won't be read. So I think that we can do a better job signage around our community and potentially word it to be both positive and educational. We want to be a welcoming and safe community and one that respects the environment and the health of our residents and visitors. And I believe that signage and public messaging could be improved upon.
Certainly good research. And city staff, if you could look into those items, I would certainly appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes, Your Honor, just a couple of things. I know it happened about a week or so ago. I just want to remind folks that it was a great job the diving crew did in the Lower Harbor. When you consider that they were able to recover enough tires to fill up an entire dumpster, and that the folks who did this came from all over. They had more than 31 divers, some from Kalamazoo, some from Minneapolis area. These were just not folks local to Marquette. And it circles back to this idea of the power of one, because all of that started, and this is the second year, because one diver, Diver Don, said, "I want to do this. I see too many tires in the water. I want to do this." And he got his buddies, and they got other buddies, and then the whole thing grows because they had one champion, and that one champion had a mission, and he was able to make it work. And now they're all excited about coming back next year and continuing that project. And certainly, the City of Marquette was instrumental in contributing much of the help in terms of the heavy lift equipment to recover them from the water. Lake Superior Watershed Foundation was, gave them a small grant to help with the project. So really, the city came together to get that accomplished. Good step, certainly, with the step towards a smoking ordinance. We're not going to stop people from smoking on the parks, we all know that. But by having an ordinance, by having some teeth in it, we have an opportunity to make it lesser. And if we can make it less than we have now, we all win. And that maybe is the hidden part of this whole issue. But the second part that becomes less obvious is Presque Isle is a tinderbox. It is literally a tinderbox. We have not done our job as good stewards of that island. We have let the brush accumulate. We have got fallen timber in that island. We have all of those things that a professional forester would say makes it go puff when you drop a match, and it's all there. And if we don't do something to help that fire hazard danger, we will lose Presque Isle. I think that is well understood by most folks, so this is certainly a step in that direction. I certainly support Commissioner Davis's suggestion that we take a relook at the food truck ordinance. I'm particularly concerned from the standpoint of, yes, we're taking an effort to control them on public property. Do we have a mechanism that controls them on private property? Because indeed, when a truck stops moving, is it a truck or just a tin shack? And do we control those? Are there issues involved that we need to be aware of? So like any ordinance we have, you periodically have to pull it up, dust it off, take a look at it, and ask if it still meet the objectives that the city wants to have. Finally, Chief, you published a very nice document that came out this afternoon that dealt with the work that the department had done this past weekend on beaches. Can you talk to that, or do you have a copy in front of you?
Yeah.
Would you just comment on it, if you would, please?
Yeah, just that I'm very proud of the staff and the work that they did this weekend to address some of the issues that have come up in the community regarding our beaches. And I really appreciate it.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Is the microphone?
Yes, and I just, yep, and I just wanted to thank our staff for taking
That's better.
... the time and the effort to address those issues in a timely fashion. And I appreciate you, Commissioner Stonehouse, you know, bringing it up tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. There are some very significant numbers on that. For example, 37 individuals were removed for being on the beaches after hours. 13 contracts were made with juveniles at the Bulkhead. 74 parking citations issued on Peter White Drive, that's one of the big issues certainly on Presque Isle. And there's other numerous comments here about seven individuals escorted off the beaches for having alcohol. So the enforcement action, I think, is an ongoing action, and certainly we're getting better at doing that. Your Honor, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Hill, go ahead.
Thank you. Good conversations today, everybody. Very, these are nuts and bolts and important issues for the management of our city. Thank you, everybody. I do want to call out that a week from tomorrow is the August primary vote, and if you have a chance to approve a couple of the senior millage and the millage for the continuation of Marktran, the transportation millage, both very important to our community, and I strongly encourage folks to go to vote411.org where you can read what the millage says and do some research. And don't forget to vote a week from tomorrow. And there is a drop box in front of City Hall to drop off your votes if you did receive one absentee. We're getting up close to the deadline, and if it is possible for you to come in and drop it off and save yourself the postage, that is encouraged. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also wanted to reiterate Commissioner Stonehouse's comments about, you know, thanking Chief Rebold and the Marquette Police Department for the important work that they were doing this past week. And I think, you know, the statistics that were passed along to us were really encouraging and really give me a lot of confidence that the smoking ordinance, we're considering this moratorium on large gatherings, as well as the eventual, you know, plan that we'll have in place to deal with sort of illicit large gatherings in public spaces in our public parks will all be enforceable. So thank you so much for that. I appreciate it. Also, just want to jump on the bandwagon with Mayor Protem Hill and say, please, please do vote, whether you vote in person or be an absentee. It's not too late to vote, to cast an absentee ballot. And I really hope that everybody casts a vote in the August 4th primary election, and of course, votes yes on both of those critically important millages that Mayor Protem Hill mentioned. This week, just wanted to highlight a few good news stories that we've had in Marquette this week. We certainly heard some positive updates tonight from the Peter White Public Library Board about gradually moving back to at least limited in-person service at the library. After more than five years, we learned that glass recycling is finally coming back to Marquette. We're going to be transitioning to a single-stream recycling system on October 15th of this year, so in just two, three months here, which is going to make recycling much more convenient and comprehensive, and hopefully will dramatically increase our recycling rate, which is pretty abysmal right now. This is going to be really good for our environment, but also for our local economy, and it will prolong the lifespan of the county landfill, which is becoming increasingly an issue that we see on the horizon. Of course, the new Beacon House project moving forward is fantastic for the community. It's going to help so many UP families and other families from out of town who are going through difficult times. We also have this beautiful and very, in my opinion, very timely new mural a couple blocks from here that I mentioned earlier on Front and Barriga, and I'm really excited, you know, to see more beautiful and impactful public art coming to Marquette over, in the coming months as a result of the vote we took tonight and the hard work of the Public Art Commission and our artistic community. I think we also took very important steps tonight to protect our environment and our lake, keep our public parks attractive and enjoyable and safe for all Marquette residents. You know, smoking is not only a serious public health hazard, but as many of my colleagues noted tonight, it generates a large amount of litter and pollutes our water. And I'm sure not everyone in Marquette is going to agree with me on this, but I do think it's the right thing to do to prohibit smoking in our public parks and beaches, and I'm proud to support it. And then finally, I just wanted to note that the Housing Committee, which we all on the commission created earlier this year, we've been sort of out of commission, no pun intended, for a few months now because of COVID-19, but we did meet in March. We had a productive meeting. I was honored to be appointed the chair of that committee, and I'm now proud to say that, and I'm really excited to say that, I'm working alongside our city planner, Dennis Stackwitz, to plan for upcoming meetings, which we hopefully will be resuming in a virtual format next month. And I'm optimistic that although we might need to move back our deadline for an initial report from that committee, which we originally were hoping to have by September 30th of this year, I'm still optimistic that we can get some sort of initial report with some policy recommendations back to this commission, hopefully by the end of the year or thereabouts. So more news coming on the housing affordability front. It's an incredibly important issue, in my opinion, right up there with preserving our natural environment and the other unique assets we have in the community, as far as one of the most important issues that's facing Marquette in the long term. So really excited to be involved with that.
Commissioner Frazier?
Well, like everybody else, have you had a good meeting tonight? A lot of things accomplished. The smoking thing is a good thing to start with. Glad to see that moving forward, because I know I'm not a smoker, and I just don't like to smell. Also, my dad has property owned by the water that we use for boats, and people, you know, those are the beaches, but people throwing their cigarettes on the side of the road, washing storm drains. I've talked to the city manager about this, for, see if you could filter or something on there. He's like, no, not really. Because one day I was on the work, and we were moving a boat, and I picked up like, bought an ice cream container full of cigarette butts washed, just washed up in the dirt, just because it had a big heavy rain. So all the storm drains were flooded, then washed into the lake, and they all flooded at my dad's property. So I was not happy about that. It was going to be for showing, but that's a different story. Beacon House moving forward, it's good for the community, everything else going good, and like the little stuff we're going, so hopefully everybody's healthy. The food trucks thing, I know, was, when we had that go through before, you know, some people cared they have a tray, they didn't want to be called a food truck. Basically, in that sort of food out of it, we called it a food truck, you know, whether it be towed by trucker on road or whatever it was, but it's considered a food truck. And there were, something that we could look back at the regulations, but I know there was talk before about not having food trucks within so many blocks or distance from a hard... was talk before about not having food trucks within so many blocks or distance from a brick and mortar store. This is the biggest complaint from the local establishments, that they put those work into their stores and people and pay taxes and the food truck just pulls up. Now, in town, it was if and on, but the biggest thing was when they served ice cream and stuff at the old Presque Isle ice cream thing, that was a big conversation by them, like they didn't want a food truck on, basically on the island. A lot of people didn't like that, but also they didn't want it near their little pavilion that they rented for the city. So something that you can look at, but I think the regulations, if I remember correctly, saying it had to be like so far away from a brick and mortar store or something like that, but so you could look forward to it, it's a good idea.
Thank you, Commissioner Frazier. I just have a few things to add tonight. I think the commission has pretty well covered it. Recently, I've had some conversations with Congressman Bergman, Senator Stabinow, and Senator Peters about funding for critical infrastructure, coastal erosion, and some COVID-19 relief. It sounds like they're gonna have some compromise coming up soon, both federal funding for individuals and for municipalities, I'm hopeful anyway. We've also had ongoing conversations with Rep. Cam Benzi about state funding. I have no significant updates for now, but I do appreciate her efforts on that front. And then finally, Friday at noon, I'm going to be participating in a webinar to help community members in our area understand the new auto insurance. There's some folks from the state of Michigan who are helping me with that and I will post details on my Facebook page for that. That brings us to comments from the acting city manager, our chief financial officer, Gary Simpson. Do you have any tonight?
Hi, thank you. Just to assure you, for the past, actually for probably a little bit longer, but signs are a continuous discussion among internal staff and we will certainly, you know, take another look at everything. Past couple of weeks, we've been internally debating the food truck ordinance. I know some questions have come up, so we'll be taking a look at that. And finally, Mike is supposed to be back in town later tonight and he will be back in charge tomorrow. He'll be working from home. He's gonna get a COVID-19 test and as soon as he gets the results of that, then he'll be back in the office. But until then, he'll be at home, so if you need to contact Mike, probably the best way is email or by phone. I hear he likes phone calls after 10:00 PM at night, so feel free to do so. And other than that, I just want to thank city staff, all the department heads, Dennis, they've all been tremendous help this week, Sean and Wendy. So I just appreciate everybody's help in making this as smooth as possible when, you know, when the cat's away, the mice don't play. We really do work hard and I just am very appreciative of everybody's effort when Mike is away, that we all pull together and do what's best for the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. We are adjourned at 7:30.